...to the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Present.
B. Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
Ikis?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Schroller?
Present.
Fromm? Do we have a form? All right, the first item is approval of amendments from the August 14th meeting. Does anyone have amendments? Then I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, August 14th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item is covered comments. You're welcome to come to the podium if you're not on the agenda and speak for five minutes. Give your name, address, and work. All right, moving along. Jada, you're up. Oh, Bill stood. This is your chance, Bill.
Address the council?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Bill O'Barnie and I represent the, at this time, the Pawnee Mental Health Center. Marshall County is part of that, of course, Marysville is the county seat. And so they're emphasizing this year, this month, or September, to be recovery month. In other words, from any kind of abuse, drugs, or alcohol, or anything, including, you know, physical abuse that people might be suffering. I would like to, if you will, read the proclamation. It's not real long, and this way you don't have to spend time reading it. And then I'd ask for your approval, and then there's a place for the mayor's signature. I can leave it here, and you can do that later. I'll pick it up tomorrow. Whereas behavioral health is an integral part of health and overall wellness, and prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover from substance abuse and mental disorders. And whereas it is critical to educate our policymakers, friends, and family members, healthcare providers, and businesses, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions at the same urgency as they would any other health condition. And whereas substance use and mental disorders are serious public health problems, in 2015, 43.5 million people aged 18 and older had mental illness, and 28 million people aged 12 or older had a substance abuse disorder, and 8.1 million adults aged 18 and older had both a substance use disorder and mental illness, according to the 2015 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Resources, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Pawnee Mental Health Services, observe recovery month to raise awareness and understanding of recovery for substance abuse and mental disorders. Therefore, the City Council of Marysville, Kansas, does hereby proclaim September 2017 as recovery month in Marysville, and calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools, to recognize the importance of recovery and to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and mental disorders, and the need for appropriate and accessible service for all people. I'd ask the council to approve that if they would.
Entertain a motion?
Move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will leave this here for the mayor to sign later.
Okay. And thank you for your work with Pawnee Mental Health.
Well, I appreciate the thank you, and it is a very important, Pawnee Mental Health is an extremely important organization. Main reason is that if we didn't have people in all of these, especially Fort Riley and Manhattan, and all the other bigger cities, Marysville too, we have a therapist comes on a need basis at least once, whenever more is needed.
Can you go talk at the podium so the people, just so everybody can hear this?
Whenever more is needed. It's a very important organization, and people don't realize it, but it keeps a lot of people out of jail.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much, and appreciate it, and I'll come by to pick them up tomorrow.
Bill, I assume you want one, and we keep one here to post?
To post, yes.
Okay.
I'll make another copy then for the newspaper.
We're gonna save you a trip, it looks like.
Sir?
We're gonna save you a trip. There's your signed copy right now.
Oh, good.
We're fast here. We're fast.
The other one, you'll post here.
Yes. Is that all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Anyone else? Okay, now, Jada. For the 1992 reunion.
Yes, ma'am.
Should I figure out how old you are? Let's think.
Uh, yeah, no. I'm Jada Ackerman, this is Libby Brenniger, and we're here on behalf of the Marysville High School Class of 1992. And we are planning our class reunion festivities during homecoming weekend. And one of the things that we would like to do is celebrate with our class at the United Bank and Trust Tailgate Party. One of the biggest obstacles that we've seen happen at that event with other classes prior to us is that especially out-of-town classmates kind of wander around trying to find where everybody is located. And so at our last meeting, we discussed the possibility of having a small section that we could mark off so that our classmates would easily be able to reconnect and find each other. What we're asking the city for is permission to do that in the city park. We'd like to have two picnic tables that we could use and reserve for our class. If we get permission from you, then of course we would notify United Bank and Trust and let them know what our plans are. We're kind of thinking maybe the northeast corner of the park, but we're flexible on where that is. We just thought with the proximity to the highway, it would be easier to let our classmates know.
Do you know of anyone else that's having a class reunion that day?
Yeah, the class of 19, or the class of 2000? I know. Thank you. Thank you.
Are they?
Okay, so there are.
So just if other, I guess, organizations want to do this, we appreciate you coming before the council and asking, and just to let people know that if you hear of another reunion and they want to do the same thing, please ask them to come before the council.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you guys have any questions for Jada?
Move to approve MHS Class of 1992 as requested.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Okay.
Just want to tell you, Jada, two years ago, I did this for my 50th class reunion, northeast corner of the park, had three picnic tables dedicated, had them marked. By the time we got back from the pep rally, somebody had moved the tables away, they'd taken all of our stuff off of it, and all that was left was one table for my class to sit around.
So you might want to tape them down.
Mark it well.
I taped them down. So I'm just saying, put a guard down there.
Get somebody with a badge down there.
Oh, you might ask police to get involved.
Otherwise, it's a great idea to keep your class together. It's really nice.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh.
Great. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Have a great time. All right, the next item is regarding the cemetery walkway. Do you?
Oh, not the cemetery walkway. I was looking down the list. I was getting excited for the story walk.
Yes, okay. Because your dogs want to hear the story.
Yes. All right. Closed cemetery walkway. There is, and you'll see a map in your packet. I'm gonna find it real quick. What page is that?
It's on page nine.
Page nine, almost there. All right. So if you look in the, in one of the corners, top-left corner.
Right. It's the top-right corner.
Unless, the writing is on the map, it's the top-left.
So there's a red circle on the map where basically somebody was buried by mistake a long time ago in the pathway.
Is it a marked grave?
Yeah. And so we're asking to have this closed off so we can sell two more grave spots right next to that, since it's not ever going to be open again, hopefully, for a walkway.
And it doesn't look like it's necessary if they're...
Yeah. So just closing off that section so that we can sell two more lots right there.
They want to sell all the way to the, all the way.
Just, yeah.
The first two, then there's...
Okay, so that whole path.
Right, that whole pathway between 11 and 13.
Yep.
Okay. I would entertain a motion?
I move that Section Q blocks, and between blocks 11 and 13, be closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did anybody go out and look at that?
No, did you?
Yes.
Anne, do you have something to report?
Um, no. Well, yes. It is just grass. I mean, it's not like it's obstructed anything. It's gonna look different than other parts of the cemetery, but it doesn't disadvantage anybody or any grave out there. So, because there's already somebody buried in this pathway, it's not gonna make any difference if we go ahead and allow this.
Well, thank you for driving out there and checking it out. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item is the story walk.
I'm excited.
That Austin is anxious to hear. He has a baby coming, so between the baby and the dog, they're gonna hear the story. No, this is before...
It's probably before.
It's probably before the baby.
Yeah.
The baby can hear it immediately.
Hello, council, thanks for seeing me tonight. I'm Mandy Cook, and I represent the Marysville Public Library, although I am Ward One as well, just in case you need to know. Last summer, if you happen to remember, at the beginning of the summer, we had a story walk on the rail trail, starting north, like toward the wagon wheel, and ending toward the end of, well, the rail trail, toward the highway. And it was called Rail Trail Adventures, or a rail trail, alphabet adventures, that's what it was. And we had about 65 people go through. That was the people that actually marked on our notebook, which we were pretty excited about. We're always looking to do things outside of the library. And so Melissa Sandman from the K-State Research and Extension Office came to me a couple weeks ago and said, "Let's do another one, and let's do it together." So she's going to have a small taste test down at the farmer's market to introduce it, but I would like the council permission to put it up that Friday before, and go all the way for two weeks this time instead of one week. Last time, we had no problems with them falling down or the signs coming down or anything. It was kind of my test run, to be very honest with you. So that's what I'm here for. The book is Raw: Raw Radishes, a Vegetable Chant. So they will be talking about rutabagas and things as they walk. So hopefully, we'll get some kids there to taste test with Melissa and then chant vegetables on their path.
Well, you have the tailgate party. That should bring some more people through during that timeframe. That worked out really well.
Absolutely. As I talked to Austin just briefly, last time, we did have to have someone there because the left side of the path is where we put it last time, because the right side of the path has the rocks, is what you told us last time, Carla, from the rail trail itself. And I don't want to put it in on, I don't want to hurt any of the sprinklers. So if we could either have them marked, or somebody could be there to shoot them up so we don't put them in the sprinklers, that's really what I'd like, beside the permission, of course. That's what I'd like from you guys.
And when you did this before, did you have any vandalism, or anybody hurt him in any way?
No, not at all.
Awesome. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the story walk request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, thank you. And thank you for all your work, Mandy, at the library. I heard all those reports on all those people that did the summer reading program, and that is so awesome. And you had that event for the solar eclipse?
We did. We had 75 people there.
Sundays?
From out of town, everywhere. Here's just our newest monthly newsletter that I'd love to share with you, which we usually do.
Thank you.
If you'll notice, the story walk is already on the back.
You were hopeful.
You're the first ones to see it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Boy, present.
Hopeful. She was hopeful. All right. The next item is MHS Homecoming, and I believe Mr. Shepherd is here.
Okay, I'm Mitch Shepherd. I'm a teacher at the high school, and also the Stuco sponsor. So last year, we sent our Stuco president down for this, but since we just started school today, we haven't had time to elect a Stuco president yet, so here I am. So we're just requesting the same basic route from last year, except after talking to the cheerleading sponsor, she wanted to request to flip the route to end at the stadium, so the student body is all in the stadium for the pep rally, so all the children can see. That was her biggest concern was that.
Are you gonna have the grade school, you plan to have the grade school kids follow you there as well?
I think that's the plan, yeah.
And are you gonna go up 12th Street to get the stadium, or you actually go to 13th?
So we'll start on Sixth and go Broadway to 12th Street, and then we'll end right at the corner of the school, yes.
Okay.
So then they can come into the stadium in that, in the east entrance, and walk down to the step, or walk into the stadium.
Okay. Well, he said 12th, because 12th would be at the top of the stadium.
Yeah, 12th will run right into where it curves around the school from Spring Street.
Okay. All right. Do you guys have any questions for Mr. Shepherd? Are you a Marysville High School graduate?
I am from Hanover.
You're from Hanover?
Yep.
We had some shepherds, sorry.
Yeah, my grandparents were Cleveland and Belton.
Okay, that's what I was trying to put together. Okay. So you have connections here.
I do have connections in Marysville, yeah.
And you wish you would have gone to Marysville.
Yeah, John Spelmyers and my aunt, so yeah, I have connections here.
Awesome, awesome. Welcome to Marysville.
Thank you.
From Hanover to Marysville.
Yep.
Okay, I would entertain a motion?
Move to approve Mr. Shepherd's request for high school homecoming parade, September 15th, at 2:15 in the afternoon, Broadway from Fifth Street to 13th Street, lasting approximately three minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Are they gonna lead it and stuff like that? Or do we have to ask any of those things?
Lead it, lead it.
I usually have the East Wind or Fire Truck stop the parking.
He bolted.
I know.
We cannot get him back. But we can talk, we can talk. I want, I, you know, in the past two years, we participated in the parade.
We do a dump truck?
No. No.
Changing departments?
We're changing departments here. I think we'll all drive mowers down the street and say, "Mow down the Raiders."
What about the sewer truck?
And so I thought about that.
Do I get to ride one of the newer ones that might not break down?
So they have, so I went out to the cemetery, and they have seven zero-turn radius mowers. I don't know, some of you guys already have mowers and want to participate, but I thought it'd be cute if we all kind of go down and have this, and have little signs that say, "Mow down the Raiders."
You mean like the Shriners?
Yes. Kind of the same concept, taken away. So how do you guys feel about that?
That's wonderful.
How many people have...
I think it sounded dangerous, but that's...
Does anybody have their own mower? Does anybody have their own mowers? You have your own mower? Okay, will you participate, Keith?
I'll be at work.
And Bill?
Yeah, I will.
Darlene?
I've got to learn how to drive one.
Do you have a mower, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can drive your own mower? And Darlene, you have to learn like me. We're gonna be the dangerous ones. Brad, do you need a mower?
Yes, I do. I gotta work.
You gotta work? You have your own mower? And Denny?
I don't have one. I got a push mower.
We got a mower, so I need...
Yeah, no, I'm not pushing.
So we need four mowers. And I thought I would just put signs that you would, you could probably tape onto your mower, and you could just drive around. Is that okay? And Darlene and I are gonna go have lessons, and if anybody else needs lessons.
Did you see the America's Funniest Home Videos, where one guy was driving a four-wheeler, and the other guy was sitting on the front of the four-wheeler with a push mower? We could do that.
No, we're all gonna have our own mowers here.
Streets aren't getting as smooth. It's a good way to get hurt.
Okay, so we're gonna be in the parade, all make the entry, and fill it out for them, and then we can, and I'll ask the, are you okay with us using the cemetery's mowers? I should ask you.
You got me concerned.
I'm gonna go get training.
Maybe be in the parade alone.
That's the problem right there.
Well, we'll just drive it out. I'll probably do much better than I did with bumper cars. Okay, so that's a yes, and thank you all for participating.
Somebody send out any emails of when we're gonna meet and where.
Well, yeah, we'll meet down there at that end, because they're gonna start at Fourth, so we'll have the trailer down there. Okay? And the rest of you guys will have to get your mowers down there to Fourth? Okay. All right, moving on. I'm not aware of any notices and hearings. So the consent agenda includes only a maintenance agreement with BMW Electric. So do we want to discuss this before we make the motion to see if you have any comments on it? Did anybody? I asked Cindy about the prior contract, and the prior contract ended 6/27/17, and it was serviced in August of 2016. My only question about it was, and Craig, on Section 2, the way that reads, are you on the agreement?
Mm-hmm.
It says, "Or as needed." Does that guarantee it's at least annually, the way it's written? At a minimum, it's annually? It's kind of...
Subject to interpretation.
Seems like it should be "and as needed," or "and/or," or something.
Or, well, I just think the lesser of annually or every 125 units, or as needed.
Who determines "as needed"?
Um, I guess if they don't function, would be "as needed." But the main thing was to make sure that it was done at least annually, in my opinion. So I didn't know if that read that way.
It says annually.
"Or as needed." I mean, what if it's determined it doesn't need to be done annually? I think it should be reworded if that was the intent.
Do you guys agree? I mean, I think it...
I agree.
Okay, so do you want, do we want to change it here and just have him sign the change? Because all we want to do really is say...
You just say "at least annually."
As needed.
Annually and as needed? Can you do it that way? Because that way, you're covered for annually, and if you need it more, then you can get it more. As needed as determined by city administrator.
Well, the thing is, you don't want to just say annually, because if it's at 125 hours, you want it, technically, you want it whichever, it's whichever comes first, annual or 125.
I was gonna say, we can say, after agreement, say, "The lesser of, a minimum of every 25 unit hours annually, or as needed." Can we insert that, or the lesser of? Is that sufficient, Craig?
Less as needed.
Minimum of every 125 hours, or annually, whichever occurs first.
Yeah.
That makes the most, more sense to me.
That's pretty...
So you want to say, instead of "or as needed," just say...
Well, I think that's in there. If the shop says that, maybe because of dusty conditions or something, it needs to be done before 125 hours, I think that's where, now, I don't know how that fits into the contract, but it could be done at 100 hours if it's under adverse conditions.
So...
I think they were trying to use minimum as the lesser of.
Mm-hmm. That's the way I read it.
Do they start those once a month?
They start once a week. We, they automatically start once a week.
So if it doesn't work, and they try and start it, that includes the "or," correct?
Yeah.
Or as needed, or as needed.
Yeah.
Do you think it's okay as it is? Craig?
If they have to come, then we have to pay them a repair bill. That's not included in this annual maintenance. This is just an oil change and a check. And if it doesn't start, and we have to call them, we pay them additional money. That's a repair.
So that's covering separately.
That's covered separately. This is just to change the oil once a year, if we've not had any problems. Because that's why it says cost of additional labor and price of services. That's, you know, if there's a problem, and we have to call them.
So Craig, are you okay with the wording?
Yeah, I think it's fine, but I mean, given...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that that's what our intent was. If you believe it says it's sufficient, then we can, does anyone else have any concerns about the agreement?
Nope.
Okay, then we can just approve the consent agenda, which is the agreement.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next item is the appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance 3657.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Beigman?
Yes.
B. Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Ikis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Seven oh.
Mayor, I would like to comment that on two of the larger items that are in that consent agenda, the deep creek construction at $74,263, that's paying 54% of replacing the North Street water line. And the other large one is to inline construction for the 2017 flush tank replacement at $57,600.
Okay, well, thank you.
And that's finished.
The two major items, yeah. All right, well, thank you for pointing that out. All right, and we'll move ahead to the administrator's report.
All right. I didn't have any action items, per se, on this one, but I wanted to update everybody on the projects that we have completed this year, or have been working on this year. First off, air relief valves, that was a major concern with us. We thought it was causing multiple sewer leaks. So we got designed specs for the air reliefs, and then we ordered the parts, got a contractor, and finally, we got everything installed. We had to shut down the sewer for the majority of a complete day to get it done, but we got it done. Yeah, so air relief valves had been completed, minus some seating. North Street water line replacement, they're the majority of the way done. They've gotten the eight-inch pipe in the ground. They were supposed to be, this week working on decontaminating the new line. So they use water with a lot of chlorine in it to clean out the line before they can just hook it up. And then they were going to work on hooking up the service lines to get that up and running. So they're getting close to being finished. They also got two fire hydrants installed as well.
So how will that affect the people along there with water? Will there be one block, and then one block, and then one block?
They are hoping for limited interruption. They should, I think they're gonna run new service lines. So basically, they're gonna do it one at a time. And so they're gonna run a new service line from the new main to the pit. And then all that's going to cause a problem is the disconnecting the meter from the old line and putting the new, it onto the new line. So it shouldn't affect them. They're hoping that it'll go as smoothly as possible.
So you don't think it'll affect the water along there at all? No resonance should go with that water?
No. And we'll let them know that, or they should be letting them know that when they are messing with their meters and changing them over.
Okay.
So the ones that are really affected are the ones that are getting pits put outside that didn't have them before.
Are there very many of those?
There's only a couple along that route. Now, let's see, Kester Restaurant Steps, Randy Rourke has been working on that. He's removed the old steps, as well as the old piers or pillars alongside, and they are shored up right now. In fact, our street crew has shored them up even more in preparation because we are pouring the cement ourselves, because Randy's crew did not have anybody do cement, so we're gonna do that ourselves. But they, like I said, they've removed all the limestone, the steps and the pillars, and are just waiting on the cement pour and the stone to get in.
And there's no disruption to the business at all?
No. They got the temporary steps in there, and I don't know if it's affected them at all, whether people walk up and go, "I don't wanna walk up the stairs," but those stairs are really steady and, I mean, probably even more safe than the previous steps that were there.
And then the monies we use for this, we could use for tax credits, couldn't we?
Um, yes, yes. And I got the, I got the application in for that, so waiting to hear back on that one.
Okay.
The materials that were removed, did we save those?
Saved them.
I thought we might need them for future related projects. That stone's so hard to come by.
Yes, we, I saved everything. It's out at the dump. I thought, I have some ideas if we didn't have any actual, I don't think we'll have something where, oh, we need to replace this, we have that out there. I don't think that's the type of project we would use it for, although some of the limestone could probably fit that. But I would think a repurpose, possibly a new stone monument somewhere, somewhere in the future.
It's good to save, don't just want to cast it aside.
Yeah, exactly. So I saved those out of the dump.
When I was over there with Sharon Kester, she was pointing out that they have that grease pit. Has she talked to you about that before? The grease pit from the restaurant is right beside the garden area of the Kester House. Do you know what I'm talking about, Bill?
I got a pretty good idea.
Yeah, so it's this big black pit, and you have these beautiful gardens, and then you have this pit. So at one point in time, I guess we had moved the pit farther down the road.
Is it a big trash can looking thing?
It looks like a dumpster with a ceiling lid.
But it's black, and it's not just a trash can, it's a pit for oil.
No, it...
It has a funk to it.
So anyway, is it, can we move it away from the gardens?
I could see what we could do.
Okay.
It'd be nice to put it, you know, in a little separate, little set.
She even offered to landscape around it to make it look prettier, but she doesn't want it near the gardens, which I can understand.
Hard to smell the honeysuckle for the grease.
Yes, yes. So you can see if you can find a better place. She said at one point it was moved away, and then they moved it back, and they said it had something to do with dumping the pit. But can you see if there's a better alternative?
So special company has to come into that.
Chip and Seal, we got everything up and running for Chip and Seal, and we actually got to run the full expected load this last Thursday. So they ran a little less than 17 blocks of Chip and Seal. So we are back up and running. We expect to do another loaded Chip and Seal on Thursday as they prepare for it. And we'll probably do at least one more load after that, the following week.
So do you want, as long as we're talking about Chip and Seal and dust, do you want to bring up about the street sweeper?
I wasn't talking about dust.
Well, Chip and Seal creates dust when we don't have a street sweeper. So you want to talk about that now?
Okay, I finally got some truth for the, for the...
Street sweeper?
Street sweeper. Still catching up here. We are expecting, which I haven't been in the office all day today, but, so I didn't get a phone call today, but I'm expecting to get the street sweeper back sometime this week because they are expecting to actually get the right piece in this time. They haven't been telling me the whole truth about it, but finally talked to the right person. So hopefully, either they fixed it today and didn't call me, which is unlikely, but they get the piece in tomorrow, they get it fixed. I take Gary down to go test it on Wednesday, and then hopefully they will ship it up as soon as possible and have it back by Thursday. And that's my ideal plan. And then we can get to picking up the dust on all the Chip and Sealed streets, which would be priority when we get it back.
If we don't get it back, I think we're gonna have to, I mean, or God forbid it doesn't work, we're gonna have to explore some things. The dust is really bad. And now it's cool, people really want to have their windows open. I talked to some people in Carolina Street, and it's like, it gets in through, they're like, you have the house sealed up, and it still gets, finds its way into the house.
Well, thankfully for the rain we had, which helped for one day or two days.
Right. That's what they asked. They said, "Can you wet it?" And I said, you know, "Thing is, it won't last."
Did you ever look into renting one of those brushes that go at an angle, and then our guys can just sweep it up?
Well, the problem with the, some of the things that are brought up, if we get anything that throws rocks, we're now throwing them either into our citizens' yards or right into their windows.
Are you saying that brush thing throws rocks?
Oh, yeah. That's how we clean our rocks out of grass. When we mow, we take the sweeper and just brush them out.
I've been asking around about options. I even asked Hall Brothers on what they use, but they didn't have the upscale equipment. All they had were blowers and one of those.
One of those? Have we called another city and asked to borrow theirs, rent theirs?
I haven't asked that, no.
Maybe that's what we need to do. If you don't get it this week, find a city nearby and ask them if we can rent theirs, and we'll just work around their schedule.
They might be happy to offset that.
Even Washington bought our old one that is still working in Washington. So maybe we go to Washington and rent back our old machine, I don't know. But let's, if we don't get it this Friday, find one to rent.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, all right.
All right, pavement reconstruction, really good news. Our application was approved for the CCLIP program to reconstruct Highway 77 from the intersection of 36, which includes the intersection of 36 and Highway 77, to Spring Street approximately. We planned a $1.6 million project, which KDOT would be funding a million dollars. So that was, I was really excited to hear about that. And that is planned for fiscal year 2019.
So that begins 6, I mean, 7/1/18, is that right? That's how their fiscal year runs?
Yeah, July.
July 1st, 2018?
Yep.
To 6/30/19?
Yep.
Okay, so we could get it done possibly at the end of next year?
Yep.
That's what we plan to do, probably?
Hoping, yep.
And so how does that affect our CLIP project?
It should, on our CLIP project, we should skip over that intersection in anticipation of having that done. And that will reduce our cost on the CLIP.
And so does KDOT come in and negotiate that with Hall Brothers, or how does that play out?
The way they bid the project is by foot.
Oh, okay.
So they can, they take it down on their units, and that reduces our cost.
And KDOT's all involved with this, knowing about the CLIP project from that side?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing on this TA project, on our crosswalks, does that come into play at all? Do we...
It's going to affect it, and we're going to still put in those crosswalks.
This year?
This year.
Okay.
But, well, there's a chance it could happen next year, but that's depending on weather because they slotted us at such a late bid date. But it could...
But we would go ahead and do that project?
Go ahead and do that. It affects, it affects the traffic. That's all. And then we asked that question when we were first applying for this, and it was, it was gonna affect the traffic, but we were gonna make it work.
So we will go ahead and proceed with that separately?
Yes.
And then the last thing is, you know, we did that transportation management plan? And I know we told them to focus on that intersection. Will they have that done before we do this CLIP project?
Yes, yes. We'll design off of our plan.
Okay, the transportation management plan will help plan that corner?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's all good. We should have a great corner in about a year and a half.
Well, we can't do very much about the southeast one, because there's nowhere to go with that, but southeast, that building.
With a big building.
Are you sure we can buy that?
That's another set of money we don't want to talk about.
I know, but that, of course.
No, but it should all work together. The hindrance of the crosswalks is gonna be a challenge, but we'll work through it.
Would that be the time to re-bring up the, changing out the light so that it's a, like it is up on 2000? Do it on demand as opposed to the...
Well, it wouldn't be covered in the project, but that would be a good time to do that, yes. Yes, I agree.
What was that, about $30,000?
Thirty, thirty-two, thirty-six, somewhere in there.
Well, we're gonna have to borrow money probably for the CLIP project, so it is a good time to do it.
Yes.
We can reconfigure it, it would be good.
Yep. Okay. And then, the solar eclipse went over really well. We had, the weather cleared right up for us right at 11:30, when everything started. We even, I mean, we fit about 2,000 people down at Lakeview, and not, I think the only people from the area, maybe a couple from Marshall County, but everybody outside of the volunteer crew was from outside the area.
Yeah, I really felt like there, everybody who didn't have a connection, either a friend or family, went there only because of the publicity given there as well. And then obviously the people with friends and family went to those, their houses or together somewhere other than Lakeview. So it was, it was great.
We had so many compliments on how we ran the whole thing. The schools that showed up, we had four or five buses come in, and this, every one of them said, "This is exactly what we needed. We didn't want vendors, we didn't want distraction, we didn't, we wanted a place for our kids to go, and then we could pick up and leave." They all loved it here. And nothing but compliments. Outside of Lakeview, we are estimating, as far as visitors coming to town, 2,000 to 3,000 outside, and around town, just sitting and watching.
Which was kind of what we aimed for, 5,000. We were thinking 5,000, so it was a great opportunity for our city.
Yes. Downtown was filled. Downtown was filled. People were shopping, going to our restaurants, and I think with the coordination of Michelle Weitzel.
And the Convention and Tourism Committee.
And the Convention and Tourism Committee.
And the Chamber of Commerce.
And the Chamber of Commerce, and Main Street, and all these...
And the City Hall, people working out there for parking.
Yes.
Or city staff, I should say.
City staff. We made this thing happen.
So it was a great thing, a great thing for Marysville.
Yep. But, yeah, we really lucked out with the weather. But that is my report.
Okay, the only other thing I wanted to bring up, and I didn't have a chance to talk to you about today, I talked to Darlene about it briefly today, but in the budget book, there's not the financials for the PBC. And I know the PBC is a separate entity, but it does hold tax dollars, and it has about $600,000 in it. So I was talking to Austin that I thought at the very back of the budget book should be some disclosure that says this is a separate entity, but to disclose how much money is there, since those are tax dollars that have been transferred to the PBC for a lease payment. So your thoughts?
Absolutely. Disclosure, transparency.
So just one page saying it's not a related entity, a separate entity?
I suppose, although it's not tax dollars anymore. It's like...
It's a lease payment.
It's a lease payment.
But tax dollars went for that lease payment.
But it's, tax dollars went to, and I'm not talking, and we can do it, tax dollars went to buying a vehicle, tax dollars went to buying equipment and all. It's like...
I guess because most, it's holding $600,000 there throughout the year, and I think it's a more full disclosure of the situation, that we're in control of, because we're the governing body for that as well.
And those descriptions could be put on that page too, that you just mentioned, what you said.
Descriptions of...
That you said.
Okay.
Okay, so he'll add a page to put out the back?
I was slimming that thing down, and you...
It's one page, it's one page, Austin, one page. Okay, that's all I have. You guys have anything else for Austin? Okay, did you have anything? All right, we will move along to standing committees. On street, I want to bring up about the stop sign at 8th and Jayhawk, because I was coming up 8th the other day, and this car came, was coming west and didn't stop at all. And if I hadn't stopped, I would've crashed into this truck. So I know we kind of talked about this, but I don't think we ever came to a final conclusion. Like, I know we talked, and I believe Bruce Durkin came up and said he didn't want to have a three-way stop, but we could still do like a two-way stop or something to control that intersection.
The counterpoint to that is we have a whole bunch of non-governed intersections where that exact thing happens every day.
But it's on a gravel road that you can't stop right away. I mean, I was going slow. I just thought it was dangerous. You guys don't think it's a dangerous intersection? Do you ever go there?
Yeah, I went there tonight.
I mean, I don't think it's safe, but I think, like Austin said, there's a lot of, probably equally. But in as far as that intersection, if anything, I could see the, like you said, the westbound traffic being probably the one to stop because it's the most blind.
No, it's the westbound. You're talking going this way?
Going west on Jayhawk.
From east to west? I agree. That would be...
Going west on Jayhawk?
Yeah, because the roads almost occur going east, going west.
That's a car that was gonna hit, that's a truck that was gonna hit me.
Probably, yeah.
And it rises in elevation there. It's a higher elevation.
You gotta, you have to keep pulling out if you're going out face the street.
You do, you have to sneak out.
To see the clarity.
So does the street committee want to readdress that and talk about that?
We have to move on to street, I guess. We talked about that under police and fire. So last time we talked it under police and fire, I don't, we talked about it in street.
Should it be a stop sign or a yield sign? It should be made aware somehow.
I think it ought to be a stop sign. I'm not favored.
Yeah, but you were saying just put one stop sign up, and it's the westbound traffic right there.
To switch it, put it on the other corner?
No, the one up going was.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay.
So I don't, I'd be okay, I think you're right. That's the blindest side, and the people coming up the hill going east can see really well.
Yeah, but if it's that blind, you might need to put east or west, but you can't see east when you're coming up face the street.
That's right.
You need to put a stop ahead then if it's that blind. I don't, I'm not...
No, it should be okay from, coming from the east, you could see it dropping down. I mean, as long as the sign's not, I don't think the trees in the north would interfere, would they? With all those horse corrals?
So are you guys all in agreement we need a stop sign there? I mean, we don't have to send it to the committee if you all agree.
I think we do. If you're gonna put one, I think that'd be the...
Put one stop sign?
And they may have to trim some of those trees back a little bit, I think, to make sure there's a line of sight for this.
So to put a stop sign there, what do we have to do, Austin?
Go through the county, put it in that on the county side.
That's on our side?
Wait, going, I'm trying to, going west.
You're heading west from east, right?
Heading west.
Heading west from east.
So it's on the north side?
On the north side, that is county.
I thought we annexed that side of the street.
We took it over from the county.
I think we annexed the north side of the street.
We took it over from the county.
Yeah, we did that, and we did North Street.
All I know is I got sent by you to go talk to the county about the possibility.
Well, that's what we were doing all the time.
It was glad to see us take it over.
The township was...
We took it over from the township.
Well, we took the corner and we took the intersection.
No, we took the whole thing because our guys were fixing it one day when I was...
We didn't take it, we didn't take it west of 8th Street. We didn't take it down to Candy Y. Okay, so...
We want to make sure of that, of course.
It seems right.
Our guys were fixing it the other day when I was...
So...
I'll check the right-of-way on it, but I was fairly confident that, somebody was pretty confident that I should go to the county and ask.
I think it was that three-way, when we were talking, we were talking about three-way because beyond that intersection, the county does own. It's a township.
To the west.
Oh, to the west, okay.
So that was why I was pretty sure to send you there, so, okay.
On streets, Mayor, I noticed a lot of intersections that trees and brush have grown up. And I think it's supposed to be 30 inches is the max to, at an intersection for vegetation.
Oh, you're saying visual on the corners for compliance? Oh, you're saying visual on the corners for code compliance?
Junipers and things.
Well, I noticed that Dave in the highlights went and spent two days last week on code compliance, so just point that out to him when he does his code compliance in the next two weeks.
Well, I think he said he was, he'd hit one part of town and he still needed to hit another part of town, if I remember from...
So if you just point out specifically a corner, right, Darlene?
I understand.
And as long as we're talking about the street, real quick, I just, we just got the notice on the sales tax and our packets, our information packets, and you know, our sales tax is holding pretty strong for 2017. Year-to-date, we're only 8,000 less than 2016, so based on the economy, we're doing really well. Were you gonna say something?
No, no. Go ahead.
No, you know, up on the high school there, on the south, on the north-east corner there, they put in a new sidewalk. Why didn't they put that ADA compatible there?
They didn't?
Which corner are you talking about?
On the northwest-east corner of the high school.
North?
12th and Walnut.
12th and Walnut. 12th and Walnut. They run a new piece of sidewalk there, but they didn't, they just brought it out to where the old curb was before and put new sidewalk right up there and never did ADA or anything there on the, going to the, going to the east.
I thought they were required to do ADA whenever they replaced, is that because they didn't replace a curb?
They didn't replace the curb.
Oh, so they just replaced the sidewalk?
They just run it up to the curb where the curb was.
Because they're, I won't speak...
If you don't replace the curb, you don't have to make it ADA, if you replace the sidewalk.
They should have, but I'm not saying they had to, but they should have.
But coming to the north, they have it so you can wheelchair accessible, it's not ADA, but coming from the north, but it is like a ramp deal. But when they went and tore off that sidewalk when they were working there, they run a new piece of sidewalk, they just run it right over to the curb again, going to the east there.
East.
Mayor?
Yes?
What did we decide about Jayhawk and 8th Road? Was there a consensus, was it going back to committee?
He's gonna, he's gonna check that, make sure we have the rights on the easement to put the stop sign.
Okay.
And then we'll have to make an ordinance.
Okay, okay.
On the Klink project, did we, the gutter planning for down on the 7th Street corridor, did we, is there plans or we...
For the Klink, we're just doing along 36 on this, it's...
Right, but there's no gutter, there's no curb and gutter there.
Where there's our tire stop sign?
Yeah.
I forget if, because some of them, it depends on how KDOT rules, because sometimes they'll do, they'll cover the crossing of that street and sometimes they won't, for arbitrary reasons, or their own reasons. I don't have the...
So you're just wondering if that, any curb and gutter along that street was included in our Klink project?
Well, I think we were gonna have to pay for the curb and gutter, but I just didn't know if we planned it, or maybe that's what...
I would, because the state at one time was kind of pressuring us to make that a more controlled intersection, and this would be kind of the time.
So I just, we just hadn't talked about it since then, I know, you know, we've got the, we have to do something with the contract with UPE on that and...
And I think we're gonna have to do some probable work along there. I talked to Jeff Schröler a while back, and he's having severe water infiltration issues when it, these big rains, whenever we have them, down in his business, because that 7th Street area there, I don't know if the railroad, it drained differently when the road was there, and now it's shedding more than it's absorbing, or what the deal is, but his basement fills up with water whenever.
And it's not from the storm sewer?
Could be that driveway that's sloped down.
No, it's seeping in from the wall. It's seeping in, seeping in along the west side, the ground saturates, because I don't know if the storm sewer there is just leaching it into the ground or what, but...
There's a storm sewer in the alley there.
There is, they redid the grate on it, I think, last year, was it?
Several, better than more than.
Two years, couple of years ago. I remember it being an open hole.
Yeah.
So does that work?
I don't, I think it worked, but I don't know if it's just, there's cracks.
It's big enough to take care of all the water.
All the water goes down underground, but then it just super saturates, it doesn't wick it away or it doesn't take it away. And it's, you know, they've had that business there since the 30s and, you know, I mean, it never used to flood, they used to do bodywork in the basement all the time, because it was so dry, and now it's the opposite, so it's hard to believe maybe that the railroad and the rock and all that, something changed. So, anyway, I said that, you know, that's, the whole area is kind of up in the air anyway, so that's probably something we need to consider when we're...
Yeah, we do, you're right, well, we do, we have it on the budget as 2020 planning and 2021 due, so...
It's not too far, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's gonna be, we're gonna be 2018 soon.
I just didn't want to, I mean, it's a little different when we put a curb in and then we end up tearing it out, because we do something different. This might be that we just don't do anything.
Don't do anything at that time.
As long as we don't have to start tearing up the street, the street to put in curbs.
Yes, I think the curb is what we chose to, you probably, don't you have a specific map of the curbs we're gonna do in the project?
Yeah, we're gonna do a bunch of them down to the west, aren't we?
Everything, everything that lines 36, if it's, I haven't looked at the map recently.
Do you want to send out a map of the curb you expect to replace?
Some of those ADA, now there are ADA because the curb is...
Pretty identifiable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd have to be able to read the parts.
Okay, okay, we'll see what, yes?
North Street. Remember, I wanted you to go look at that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, now there's holes and they're getting bigger.
Where at?
It would be real close to right across the street where Mandy Cook was.
By the airport?
They, yeah, they did a patchwork and now they're...
Is it those, is it the cracks that we filled in, or is it...
You mean there's a hole there?
Yeah. Yep.
Will you even check that?
Observe it.
That shouldn't be there, especially with our onyx seal. Is that one of the holes that keep reoccurring?
Yeah, it's like the base is bad underneath.
But we've torn that out and replaced the base before too.
Somebody did, yeah, there's a patch like this and then right where it ended, that's where the hole went.
It's like it didn't dig it big enough. Oh, I have to try it.
Check it out.
Mayor, I have another question on streets, Broadway. Has Main Street talked about the trees or replacing the trees in front of businesses?
I don't know, what's the status of all that?
I was told, I was asked to concentrate on something else.
Okay.
I have a plan.
I think the hardest thing on Main Street is the people that want to maintain them have beautiful flower pots out and maintain them, and then you have the other ones who don't want to maintain them and are just gonna let them go. So what do you do?
You take it over and be consistent with the whole street.
Right now, it's real inconsistent.
It does make a big difference for beautification, I mean, you know, the picture is on the front of the Kansas Magazine, on the phone book, it's what makes it look so different besides, you know, Neo Buildings, it's the trees and things, otherwise it just looks like a big alley. There's some value in it.
And they do, the trees serve a practical purpose too, and you get out there on a hot sunny day, you notice the difference between a tree-lined street and just a bare one. And that's a big selling point for me as well, but...
But then we had the tree that went uprooted the sidewalk.
Yes, and that was, that was a tree that shouldn't have been in downtown area, it's probably there before downtown existed, but they, so they built around it, wasn't meant for that confined space, that's why that was there. I have a, Main Street did come up with a plan on what, their design crew or committee came up with an idea of how they would like downtown to look, and I have that plan, like I said, but I was, I was told to move on to something else, and that's why I hasn't been brought up recently.
Good winter project.
Yes, which actually, and I did go out and get bids from contractors on it, and they said if we did want to go through with it, that to order for spring would be an ideal way to do it, but...
It'd be nice to see some information on it if you wanted to share it with us.
Okay, great, I can do that.
All right.
I got one.
You got one? We're still on street, we're hovering on the street.
I think one of the workshop meetings in spring Gary brought up, whether we was gonna do anything with the salt shed, construct a new one or...
We approved that for 2018.
We approved it for the budget next year.
Did you?
It's in the, it's in the budget.
Yes.
We said yes to that.
Yes.
I said no to that.
To the salt?
Yeah, we didn't approve the budget.
Oh, you missed the salt, man. Okay, well, moving on, water and wastewater, do you know when the CIPP is gonna be done?
They were still scheduling it, but they have until the end of October to get it done.
Okay, end of October.
They were, they were working with, we have all our information in for them, they are having trouble with some of the other cities, so they can coordinate, so that's where they're at with that.
Okay, and the other thing is, did you get the information about the tanks, that the water tank at tension, or our water tank by tension, hadn't been cleaned since '09, and the one that was built east had never been cleaned? And did you drive it back and look at it?
I'm just saying, I didn't, I wasn't gonna put it off forever, I just didn't think we need to spend that right now.
Well, it was $9,000 and it was, and if you look at, it's a lot...
I know, but I'm just saying, we didn't, I just don't think we need to...
I just want to make sure you saw it. And the other thing is, I understand there's a report that Sammy does that says, every day, how many calls they go to for utility, utility calls, water and sewer calls? She makes a report, and I was just saying, it'd be helpful if Debbie would put that on her highlight report, what each day the calls were, so we not know whether there were five or 20.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else for water sewer? Parks and Rec, I just want to say that our parks and recs are great for all the people that came for the eclipse and down there on Sunday, and the bathrooms are clean and stocked and just, I think the crews did a good job to prepare for the people.
They did, and I talked with a lot of people and people who camp down there, and they were, had nothing but compliments for the parks in the area.
And the people, there was a lot of compliments about our people, so thank you, residents of Marysville. Okay, we'll move along to Cemetery and Airport, Police and Fire. Oh, I know, please, I was gonna bring up the report, Danny, you had mentioned that we don't get that police report. You know, we got, you used to get a police report that shows the statistics of the crimes and we haven't got one for Hellington?
A long time.
For a long time, okay.
I don't know how long, it's been quite a while.
And then the other thing is, you know, I saw you gave us that compliance report, and I just wanted to clarify that when... So when we got this compliance report that you guys got in the mail, or in the information packet, so if there's no documentation over, on comments, they cleaned it up themselves, correct, Austin? And if otherwise, we always bill them, and the amount that we bill them is in there, and they have 30 bills, 30 days to pay it before it goes on the tax bill, correct? Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, yes?
Can I have a copy of that, because I never got it.
You didn't get it in your packet?
I've got the email.
I see Walter's starting to move stuff back in up there.
So is hers.
I know Walter is too.
Yeah.
Yeah, hers is too. There's a washer and dryer and a car out there now and it's Walter's.
I noticed, I'm going back here, it says that, this says, "City mode and trim bushes," but it doesn't say an amount that was sent. Do you see that one? And somewhere here, it says, "Mode 522."
Okay, that's...
That was before when you guys asked the amount to go on there, I can go look them up if I want to know.
Oh, okay, but you know you bill them?
Yes.
Okay.
Every time.
Okay, so did anybody else have questions about that report? I thought it was helpful and I was really glad Dave worked on it, and I hope he continues to work on it on a consistent basis.
And I was glad to see that he's going to do different sections of the city.
Yeah, I had a question about that too. I talked to Cindy about this a little bit, many of the letters that were sent out, the next thing that happens when they don't comply is a letter goes out, a certified letter, if it comes back, then it's considered served, like if they...
That's what the returned means, right?
Yeah, returned means they didn't acknowledge, but then we have the right to go ahead and proceed to find them. So, I mean, because when I looked at that report, everybody that was on there, the address was correct, they just chose not to pick up that piece of mail. So we have current information, they're just, they're just refusing to acknowledge that they have received a notice. So I don't know if they understand that if they don't take care of it and the notice comes back to us, we still can proceed. They're still in violation and we have, we have a remedy.
Right.
And then admin finance, anybody have anything? Okay, appointments and wage determinations, I don't have anything at this time, so Cindy, Craig?
Yeah, I'll start with the draft ordinance for intermodal containers. There's a staff report that I think was in front of everybody that appears to be applicable to this. I drafted this, fully expecting it to be revised and maybe revised in several areas. This was based off of it. I think the last thing I got from Dave Richardson, just really just a list of each of the zones and what types of use would be more discussed, and so I did what I understood that to mean or interpreted, I guess. So by no means is this, you know, like a legal recommendation of what it should be, in fact, that's a decision for not only this governing body, but the Planning Commission, because as I understand the procedure to be per Kansas statute is, this council can agree on something in some form, I think this would be the, maybe one way to do it, maybe the best way, and then the Planning Commission can review it and make a formal recommendation back, and if it mirrors what the council sent to them, then it's just basically a rubber stamp, I mean, up to a vote, it's an ordinance, but I think, and that's what I understood, you know, the next step to be, was to get it into a draft ordinance. So I'm open to comments, questions, proposed revisions, and I have it up on my computer, I can start making edits, red-line edits, and then circulate it maybe with Dave as well. I don't know if this is Dave's input on the staff report, but...
Yeah, well, you know, when we, I printed this out today and I came into City Hall to try to, I couldn't even remember, it's been so long since we discussed this. It was in 2016 that I was like, I can't even remember what we agreed to, so that's why I, we copied this so that you guys, because you don't remember what happened in 2016 as well. And I think Darlene had probably, when she came in, she had already researched it and had some comments, so do you want to go over what your comments are, Darlene?
Okay, well, on number two, with the six units that are already in place, it says here shall not fall under the requirements of this ordinance, but we had said that they must be painted and maintained, so like section seven and eight...
Right, those are applied.
Yeah, because seven was talking about if they move, that they're no longer allowed to have them.
Right.
And then eight was to paint and make them aesthetically pleasing, so I don't know how you change that to include seven and eight?
Yeah. I'll re-record that.
And then on number three, in Dave's staff report, he had, I-1 would be under number four, use permitted upon review and would require a hearing.
Instead of under three.
Instead of under permanent, permitted. And then number five, temporary, I thought at one time we talked about not allowing on the street. Does anybody else recall that, or maybe it was at the Planning Commission? Because it mentioned in here, placed in street parking or on... Because it mentioned in here placed in street parking or on, or off-street parking.
Like some of the church projects, I mean, where else would you put it besides the street? I mean, for some of the commercial projects.
But sometimes like the streets are blocked off.
Yeah.
So.
So you're saying don't, you can't block the street?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, just on a street that's open.
If they were going to do work on Center Street or Broadway to a building, they would have to put it on the street. There wouldn't be any way about it.
But I don't think we would want a container on Broadway or a highway.
No.
Because they're, I mean, they're big.
How else would they work them?
Bigger than a, bigger than a dumpster.
You know, I, I really see these more being used for construction rather than a remodel and maybe a remodel, they just need to rent a storage unit off-site.
Yeah.
Rather than to put a container in the street.
I don't think so. I, I think if you're going to have a construction and, and if you work on a building downtown, it might be a remodel, but it's going to be construction. It's going, part of those buildings over there, the roofs are falling in. If somebody buys and wants to do it, they're going to have to have equipment there.
Well, in the past, no one's ever had a container than I know of.
That's why we're doing this. I just think that you have, you have to let them have the container as close as you can to the work.
It's actually safer than them running fork trucks around or sky tracks around a block somewhere.
Down to the school bus barn.
Yeah.
That's.
Maybe we want to say something like preferably off-street parking rather than giving them the option, making the off-street preferred. Can we do that?
Or could we even have that be a request that, that council acts on?
Instead of getting, doing a cart block that you can use it? How do you guys feel about that?
I think they have to allow it in certain ways.
Well, I think all of us can think about it and just got to ensure it, you know?
But then.
On the highway and.
If you, if they're going to go do construction downtown and they have to go, come here and go, I want to use a container on Broadway. And there's a chance that ha, over half of you say no, just because you didn't like what they were doing. That's something we don't need to happen. I mean, that's, it's.
Well, that'd be pretty petty.
It would be.
But it happens.
So the majority of you guys are okay with the street? Is that the bottom line? Okay. All right. And then, I, is there anything else on five?
Well, I wondered about the fee. I thought maybe the fee ought to be more comparable with, say, what temps would charge for a dumpster.
They're charging for the use of it. We're charging for just a permit to put it in a place.
Uh-huh. For six months.
Yeah.
Which is a long time.
So yours, what you want to do is put a per month fee on there to discourage the six months? How do you guys feel about that?
I think if, if you got somebody that comes into town and wants to redo something.
Spend money on.
On something we don't want to make it too hard.
Back to making it difficult on new business coming in town.
So you guys are okay with the $2.50 per linear fee?
Because a 41 would give you $100 for six months and I think that's, yeah.
That's our comp with, with our other, as long as.
That's a good point.
Within our normal permitting fees, you wouldn't want to charge.
Say that again?
You, I think it needs to be comparable to other permitting fees. You wouldn't want to charge three times the permit fee for this that you would a building permit or something.
That's true, because a building permit wasn't very substantial.
Yeah. I just, it feels like it, and then like, what's the justification?
It seems to me that the, the use of these cars are more conducive to storing building materials than they are to emptying trash into, which if they were emptying trash into it, it would make them competing a current business, a business in town, which would be Demp's. But I don't think they're going to use it for trash.
No, I don't think, I don't think you ever thought it would be used for trash.
Well, then what?
It was just, I think she was trying to discourage six months. I think that is her intent. Well, did you have anything else on five? She had read through this really thoroughly, so that's fine. If anybody else has comments on five, please share.
I have on four.
Oh, okay.
Use permit upon review. Uh, I would like to know if use permit upon review means that, um, there's another part in here, some of this is. Oh. All permits obtained on any intermodal container shall be immediately void upon the sale or transfer of ownership without the purchasing party obtaining a separate permit. I thought we had decided that if there was a transfer of property with one of these containers on it, that the container would have to be removed.
We had.
Are you talking about number seven?
Yeah.
Oh, you went to seven? Okay.
Well, I did that because I can't find what I'm talking about.
Okay, so on seven, yeah, I think.
On seven.
It's in the, it's in the minute.
That after voided upon sale or transfer of ownership.
I think the effect of that.
If the homeowner removes it, the property is sold, the container must be removed.
That's what we said, but that's not what this says. This says the new owner has to apply for a permit for the container.
Yeah, so I think we just want a period after ownership? Is that right? And do you want to say that it must be removed?
Yeah, we're going to avoid it. Yeah.
That's what we had, um, in November 28th. You want to show Craig for that?
Yeah. And then what I, what I was talking about on number four, about use permit upon review up here in, um, prior to any, back up to two. Any intermodal container currently used in the city limits of Marysville as of the 28th of August shall not fall under the requirements of this ordinance and shall be allowed its continued use as authorized by all of the pre-existing local and state laws. Well, I'm wondering if maybe there aren't a few in here now that we haven't discovered.
That snuck in.
That snuck in.
Then he snuck in, because back here we had specifically said six.
Yeah. I think there's some in here. I mean, I've seen some and they said, oh, it's just temporary, but, and I brought it to Dave's attention. I don't know if it's still there. I haven't been up there to look, but another one showed up out in front of, still in the city limits, but it's out in front of a, a business across from the golf course. It was sitting right up front on the highway side.
Well, this, this, our motion specifically said six containers.
Well, you guys did do a moratorium, so they wouldn't count. If somebody came in and added another one, they went outside the law and, and introduced that into the system. We had those six pre-existing.
So do we say in the city as of this date, November 28th, 2016?
Like you said, if permitted before August the 28th. Because if it didn't have a permit, when we have issued a new permits, then we have the right to tell them to get rid of it.
With any, with any new thing, if they, if they built a building without a permit and so on and so forth, we have the ability to.
So instead of any, you say permitted in the city?
Permitted, yeah.
Okay. But it should be permitted before we put a moratorium.
Well, we haven't issued any more since then, so it.
Sure?
If it's not, if it's not permitted, no.
David hasn't issued any more?
As of November 28th of 16.
Okay, well, there's this thing in here about, uh, permitted upon review. Does permitted upon review, upon review require an open hearing, a public hearing?
They have to come to the, they have to come to the Planning Commission.
Well, it says on another part here, that's what I've been wrestling this thing around and looking for, uh, that says permit and open hearing.
Where you at?
Um, on, uh, number three.
They have to get on the agenda of the Planning Commission.
That was on the agenda?
They have to get on the agenda. The person upon review has to be on the agenda for them to review it. So, yeah, it's an open hearing.
Okay. Yeah. On the staff report, it says restricted light, the light industry is considered as a use permit upon review and that it would require a public hearing to be placed in this district.
Yes, and that's what I brought up on number three where it says I.
Residential.
I-1, it should be, I-1 should be under number four.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we've got to redo this? Are we all going to talk about this? Redo this?
We're not voting on anything there. This is an open discussion.
Okay, so on seven, is that right? We're taking out without the purchasing property obtaining a permit because that's not possible because of our minutes. Is that correct on number seven?
And container must be removed.
Yeah, we're, we're.
You're eliminating, I mean, so I kind of get an idea.
We're pulling out without the purchasing party containing a separate permit and we're adding after ownership and the intermodal container must be removed, right, Darlene? That's what we want? And then.
What about if the new owners buy that container? Does it stay there then on the property or?
Has to be removed. That's what our minutes say here. You already approved that.
I know. All I'm saying is if you buy that with the property, if they move it, can you bring it back in?
No. No. It doesn't grandfather to the new owner.
But can they apply for a new permit?
No.
Not if it's not in the allowed.
Allowed areas.
If it's in the allowed, if it's in the allowed area.
Only, yeah, only, well, this one must, would be removed and then they'd have to come back and see if they fit according to our unified land value.
Well, what if it's, so if it's in the allowed area, they have to remove it, come in and go, because that's what the wording says.
Well, this one.
Yeah. It, I know, but, but if it's in, if it's in our allowed areas.
If it's in the industrial area, could it stay as well?
Or the, or the R3.
Yeah, I mean, those.
R3 is.
Whichever.
Is a, is a residential, single-family residential, or residential, single-family with restricted light industry is used permitted upon review. Uh, so if somebody buys in that area, comes in and goes, uh, they have to remove that, come into the city, go, I want that back and get a permit for it.
So we need to make a sep, you want to leave seven as it reads and it says and that, you want to say for, um, intermodal containers grandfathered in, they must be removed?
Yeah.
Do you want to make a separate statement to that?
Something like, if it's not, if it's not in one of the allowed areas and it's a, yeah.
If it's a grandfathered in?
Yeah.
Are you guys okay with that then? You understand? Okay. And let's see, anything else? Were you, were we at Vicki or Darlene?
We traded off. Well, on number nine, on number nine, I would like to add that last, that, um, after shall not create traffic hazards, congestion, or cause negative neighborhood, um, light.
Negative, negative aesthetic impact.
Aesthetic.
On the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So you want to say shall not create traffic hazards, congestion, or negative aesthetics to the neighborhood? Is that what you want to agree?
How, how are you going to determine that?
Well, it's pretty broad.
I mean, that, that's going to be like, okay, I live over here and you don't care what my neighbor says, so it's okay, but you live up here on Park Place, so I can have it? I can't have one up there, but I can have one down here? You're going to get in a mess.
That's what happens too.
That's pretty objective. Whichever one that is.
Kind of our codes are that way. Our codes are kind of that way too.
Well, so then why make anything else that bad?
As determined by zoning superintendent, supervisor?
Still, still kind of subjective too. You, you're leaving it up to a person to go, that doesn't look so good. That, they kind of painted that, so that looks better.
We're already telling them not to paint it.
Yeah.
But we do have like Main Street that makes suggestions on what our downtown looks like or the area looks like.
I don't think you want to leave it open. Your comment is going to be harder on a temporary one. I get that on a permanent one, which I don't think the permanent ones would really, are not impacting your neighborhood, but to say that, that temporary one on Main Street, yeah, it's going to look ugly for three months until it's, I guess it's, I'm just kind of back to the. Temporary is a big deal, but the permanent ones are going to be your problem.
And I think that's where you're getting at with painting it. Let me think. What was it? Seven, eight, paint and sign in, intermodal container shall be reasonably painted or covered with a tin-like material of the surrounding neighborhood. I think that's, uh, keeping it within those permanent ones that are being.
Do we need to say that on the permanent ones there? Do we have to say permanent on number eight?
You could probably, uh.
Yeah, as opposed to the temporary ones.
Yeah. Because otherwise, plant one in the, in the middle of the block and it's.
Well, and like nine, I was thinking on permanent ones.
Well, that, yeah.
But I, I think, uh, recovering that with telling them to paint it like the surrounding area for the ISO tactic.
Oh, you're saying the paint should be sufficient?
Yeah. I, I think that's where we were getting at. Otherwise, you're doubling down on painting it, oh, it better, painting it like the surrounding area and it better not look bad.
Right.
I mean, that's all you're adding on to it.
Public health, safety and welfare is a pretty broad statement. That could be almost.
Inoffensive.
I mean, that's like traffic and stuff like that.
So did you get all those, Craig?
Tried.
Okay. So, um, will you send them one and we can look at it next meeting? Is that the next step? Revised one?
Would the council want me to get with Dave as well, since he's not here today to clean this up? Or I could just do it on my own and send it? Doesn't matter to me.
Well, Dave's not here, so it'd have to be you. You'd have to make it within the.
I mean, we could.
Is he coming back?
No, oh, yeah.
But he wasn't here for the discussion, so.
No, he's not.
Right, right. Um, he would maybe add some context historically of what was discussed.
So you'll work with Dave?
Yeah, work with Dave, yeah.
Okay. Are you good, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the next item is the terms and conditions addendum to the water tower cleaning bid. Austin advised that council discussed this at last meeting and instructed, uh, that we draft some sort of, and this is what I came up with, uh, I guess an addendum to sort of the terms of their bid, um, to be executed, um, and, but to keep it pretty simple, was the impression I got. So I kept it very, very simple. There's not a lot to it.
What's occupational disease?
Oh, that's the, that's the, just the general liability insurance I got.
Okay, so it's general liability.
Misophilioma or black lung?
Yeah, all that stuff.
And so the only thing I thought is at the very end, you need to have a place where they sign it, right, Craig?
Company.
Yeah, it's the company.
Oh, the company's a bad, I'm sorry.
Honestly, I didn't know what name to put. There wasn't a name on the bid, so I didn't know the representative.
National Wash.
No, I mean, a representative.
Representative.
Oh, okay. Okay. You guys are okay with this drafting? I think the main thing is to get the liability and if there's any problem. So I think they covered the two main points that the other people had that we didn't have on ours.
Right.
So, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the addendum as proposed.
Move to approve the addendum between Marysville and the National Wash Authority for cleaning of the water tower.
Authorizing the mayor to sign?
Authorizing the mayor to sign, yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I want to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, thank you very much. Do you have anything else, Craig?
No, I don't.
Okay. I don't know of any reason for an executive session. So, I think I covered everything during the meeting today, so don't forget, um, your mowers and I will make the sign for us to carry for the parade. and I will make the signs for us to carry for the parade. And I'm glad you guys are willing to participate.
Wait, wait, we're not carrying, we're mounting them.
Mounting.
You could mount them on the parade, yeah. Yeah. We might mount them on the back of the seats, I don't know. We'll mount them somewhere on the, yeah, we need our hands, right, to drive? Okay.
That's what I understood, yeah.
But anyway, I, I don't have anything for round tables. Keith!
For the Eclipse activities, people that put that on, job well done. You know who you are. Too many names, the name. Job well done.
I agree.
That's all.
Phil?
Yeah, I got something. I got some phone calls and most of them were all in one location, but employees using cell phones and driving vehicles and smoking cigarettes.
I got those too.
I don't care if they smoke. I don't think they should be on the cell phone, smoking a cigarette, and driving a vehicle at the same time.
Is that our policy? Do we have a policy on that?
On no smoking, yes.
You can't smoke while you're driving?
While you're in any vehicles.
Any vehicles.
Any vehicles.
And can you, can you be on a cell phone when you're driving our vehicles?
I don't know about that policy.
Police department can, because we've had, I've asked, achieved about that. And they try not to, but it's not, it's not always practical and all the vehicles aren't necessarily equipped with Bluetooth, so.
So can we, can we make a policy like that Craig, excluding the police department?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yes, I think that you can, limiting that kind of use. And there's no city-wide ordinance prohibiting cellphone use.
It's legal. Not like as long as you're eighteen.
So cellphone use, I mean, so getting back to these phone calls, because I've received some of them too, can we limit the use of cell phones on the job?
The hospital does.
Yeah, I think that you can.
And that even applies to the volunteers.
See, the problem is, is that people go by and they see one person doing the work and two people on a cellphone and two people smoking a cigarette. And then they call and say, so can we, I mean, I know like a Landel Corporation, they all go outside to smoke. Our guys work outside, but it does, smoking a cigarette does prohibit your working ability if you're a laborer, right? You can't dig a hole and smoke a cigarette.
They do dig a hole and smoke a cigarette.
Well, okay, but it's, anyway, it's not good for, anyway, can we limit that? Can we say that you, you can smoke your cigarettes only on your break time?
I, the problem with selling the cellphone is because you don't know if they're talking business or trying to find a part or whatever. We don't know that.
Yeah, but, well, we could make it so that they-
No personal cellphone.
No personal cellphone.
You can have, and you have supervisors that have cell phones, city cell phones.
All our employees use their own cell phones. They're not paid for by the company.
I know, but I don't think, I think that the point is that people say that they're not efficient because they see them on their cellphone at work.
They can guess that.
Well, I'm just saying, you're in there, it's their personal cell phones.
Yeah, because they have no other cell phones. We're not paying for any of their cell phones.
So we don't want to pay them while they're on their personal phones.
Well, they're doing company business on their personal phones.
They could be doing personally.
Do you think the majority of the work they're doing when they're on the phone is business or personal?
I can't tell you that.
I know. But I think that, I mean-
That's my case. We don't know that. I mean, they could very well be doing business though, the whole entire time, but we don't know what.
I don't-
We do call, if we think of them on the radio, we do call several of the guys on their cell phones to answer it.
Well, how do you feel?
The best we can probably do is-
I don't, this cellphone deal's getting way out of hand anyway. Everybody's talking on a cellphone or texting or doing something anyway. And I don't think they should be doing it on, on city time, on their personal, on personal phones.
Yeah. What, how do you feel Vic?
If they were being, there any place that I ever worked that I could just pick up the phone and use, you know, personal time, just sit and talk on a personal call, and everybody that works on a crew, you're only calling the supervisor Cindy. You call everybody on the, on the job site?
It depends who I'm looking for, who I need. Quite frankly, we don't call them all, all the time. Can you text me a cellphone number? Can you text me a part number? Or I got a sewer leak over here, can you go over there? We do not put that over the radio. We put that only through phones and they have their own personal phones that we call and they pay for. So we do do that because we don't put, this person has a self, this has a sewer leak or whatever. I'm not going to say that everybody talking on their phone is doing city business. I'm not going to go that far. But I will tell you here from the city, we, we do call and ask them some, you know, I can't, I can't get Gary, Gary doesn't answer, I'll call Sam. I can't get-
But Gary needs to answer and, and we need to handle it through our supervisors. You need them to have the supervisor pick up every phone that comes from city.
It may be one of those things that where Gary's under a piece of equipment or he's in something loud and-
I know, but it's, it's probably not an emergency situation and if it is, you need to get in the car and drive and see him. But I'm just saying, how do you feel Todd?
Okay, well, all right, as the parent of a teenager, I'm going to say, yeah, I agree with Danny, there's too damn many cell phones, but, but it's a little, and it's a little bit of a generational thing and I'm starting to get on the older side of that. I think the first thing we probably should do, in my opinion, is have a conversation about, not necessarily impropriety, but the appearance of impropriety. Be like, hey, you know, we understand there's times you need to use the phone, really need to try to limit the personal stuff. You need to not be looking like you're standing around just relaxing on break all the time. Try to cool it. It doesn't look good, you know, people aren't happy about it. It looks like you're not doing your job, even if you are. You need, it's about how, you know, appearances.
Communicating that conversation.
Communicate that. And then I think if that, we don't have any success, then we have to maybe look at going separate.
How do you feel Brad?
I think if we're going to, I agree, and I think if we're going to do a policy, we need to involve the supervisors.
I agree. It needs to be crafted as a team.
I don't think we should be just dictating without getting their, their side of the story.
Yeah, well, I, I just feel like we get these calls from people, they have a valid concern. If they say that one person is digging a hole, two people are smoking and two people are talking on cell phones, then I don't care if it la, and, and people are taking pictures of these people and saying, I watched them for 15 minutes. I mean, it's a problem. And, and if, there's no way that both of those guys are talking about city business, two men standing right beside each other. I mean, that is very unlikely. But I just think, I think it's a good point. We can get the supervisors and say, you guys need to be, have your workers, don't need to be on cell phones and don't be smoking on the job. They need to be working on the job. Especially, especially when we have people who have dust blowing in their house every time a car goes by and they want to know why we don't sweep their street. And, and I don't have a valid response to that. You know, when, when they say, I'm looking at these people and, and only one out of four are working, why can't the other three come and sweep my street? I have no response.
For the record, I'd rather the guy smoking and digging a hole at the same time and doing that than standing over on the side and smoking. Just my two cents. You said about-
You want him smoking and digging?
I was going to say, if he's going to take a smoke break, if he's working so hard, he can't go stand over yonder and have a cigarette? I don't really chagrin that. I mean, I think people can actually smoke while they get work done, whether that's right or wrong.
Aren't you worried about gas tanks?
But they're not allowed to use any equipment and smoke, right?
They're not allowed to be in, in-
In enclosed vehicles.
Not the vehicle or equipment. Okay. Did you have a comment Darlene? I went around the table.
I just think tomorrow would be a good time to have a discussion with, with the supervisors and get their feedback.
That's usually when I talk to them, yes.
Phil, you have a comment about it?
No.
You brought it up.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
I'm going to kick the process of running away Bill.
Did you have a, I'm sorry.
I think it's being addressed. But you started with, with them driving and on the phones. Was that, was that the point?
Well, that's a definite no. Drive? That's a definite no, that they're not-
It's not against the law.
I don't think that's right.
No, it's not against the law.
And it's not a policy right now.
Well, maybe we need to have that policy. Do you want them driving and talking on the phone, the, the police department? Or actually, would, do you guys want, or do you guys want?
I think we'd just bring that up as a separate.
We can bring that up, but if you're going to-
Yeah. There's a, there's a section on cell phones. And I think it would qualify under it. I mean, it's, it's very general, yeah, broad. It's disruptive, shall not disrupt or distract from the conduct of city business. I think you can make an argument that being on your phone while you're driving is distracting them, having the potential to harm the applicable city department or the city in general. They can argue it there too. I mean, it's addressed, it's just not specifically addressed, driving and, and using the cellphone.
So I think that we should-
But they could also make the argument that they are talking city business and being efficient. It's not disrupt-
Not driving there.
Not driving, not driving.
I, I won't buy that.
Okay. But can we make a law for everybody else then? I'm just, can we start that?
Heck no.
No, they can pull over, they can pull over and talk.
And that's really what they should do, pull over. They've got to call.
Is that a consensus of council? They don't drive and talk on the cellphone? And that, that's how we interpret that?
I'd still like to get that, the supervisors, there may be extenuating circumstances when you do.
Yeah, supervisors, they hear their people. They know if they're talking on cellphone. They know if they're told to order a bolt or whatever. They know if they're talking to the kids or they're talking to their wife or they're making plans for the evening. Supervisors could be made responsible for that. And the smoking thing Craig, even when they're outside, has a policy for our company, can't, can't we say no smoking unless you're on a break?
But see, do they take organized breaks?
They do.
Do, do they? So, okay, I was going to say if it's like the, you know, they're waiting for a load of asphalt or, you know, the, the street crew or something, there's moments in there that I just kind of presume that was more what they were taking for breaks. I didn't know they took organized breaks. Fifteen minutes every three hours or two and a half or whatever?
That's, that's, yeah.
We, the city.
So I guess the takeaway is we don't want them driving with the cellphone and to talk to department heads about reduced use of the cell phones in work areas or if they think it's a good idea, get their input right. And as well as smoking on the job other than breaks, get their input. Is that the takeaway?
And not in any of the vehicles.
Okay.
I mean, that's already a policy. They're violating that. Yeah, somebody's got to enforce it.
Not in a vehicle or equipment, right? Any kind, okay. Anything else Phil? Darlene? Oh, no. Hey Brad? Todd?
Yeah, the trail connection from the trailhead, the Blue River Rail Trail, Trailhead to North and Seventh Street has been clear cut, so it is definitely really happening at some point, which I think is great. I know that, I know what it's like to negotiate with UPE and so, congratulations to the Marshall County Connection for doing that. And they've, they've got it cut and I think they're going to have, Steve Blumer's going to do some rock work and things, but if you kind of go up to the corner of North and Seventh, you can see where it's going to come up to Seventh Street there and get on this regular city right of way.
Is it going to get on Seventh Street?
It's, it's going to get on Seventh Street. Now, I've talked to-
It's going to end at Seven? Or is it going to go on that little hump thing?
Well, it's going to come up to the corner of North and Seventh, where there's the Diamonds now, at the Dead End. South of that, they're kind of worried about just finishing that section to the city street at the moment. Because I've talked to a couple of the board members, but I thought it was something that probably, you know, will need to be involved because that starts getting on our right of way. But we do have a really nice pavement up there now since we did that with the laydown machine when we first got it, what, two years ago?
Yeah, it's much better.
And so they're, they're going to come up with some ideas for what they'd like to see and come and present and see what, what we think and I think it'd be great.
But you think they're going to go on the street or you think they're going to go on the grass?
Right now, I think it's just going to come up to the street.
That's as far as I guess.
I don't think, because I, I believe they have CES probably put, I think was put together some plans as far as there's more right of way on the east side of the street than there is on the west, especially when you get further south. That blocks, just first block north of Calhoun, the right of way is really narrow because it's technically a one-way and the tracks are only like 10 feet on one side of the curb, so. And it's a drop. So there'll be some, you know, have to be some work and planning there, but I think it's really a good sign of progress. I know that they've had a lot of success and a lot of people don't know how to get out there, so I think this would be a great thing.
And the intersections, uncontrolled.
Well, and those, and those intersections from Calhoun to North Street are some of the worst intersections for the trees and the shrubs on the corner, walking side.
There's a number of those places. So anyway, this is the great, the good things are happening comment.
Oh, thank you.
You're all in Vicki's thunder.
Okay, Vicki, what is your thunder?
Well, I just wanted to say a new business opened in Ward Three, a new car wash. And I wanted to thank, it's B&amp;J, and I wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce ambassadors for coming down for a ribbon cutting. It makes it special and they gave the new on, the people who built it out at the Connells, they gave them a plaque with a dollar in it representing the first dollar earned in a new business. I want to thank Brenda and the-
Do they always do that for a new business? They do?
It's J and B.
JB. JB.
JB.
I get you. It's J and B. Thank you very much. Anyway, I wanted to thank the ambassadors for making that special for our new business. And then I wanted to thank again the Parks Crew. I have, went down and sat by Brad and his wife Sharon to the entrance to the Squirrel Jam. And we had, there was a lot of talent down there. That was, that was really Bryce, or Brighton Stole was one of the bands and they were really good and people-
And our canopy there, our trees were such a blessing because it was a hot day.